I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads and join me for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you all.
Hey, good morning. Welcome to the October seventeenth regular meeting. Our next workshop will be Tuesday, October twenty ninth, eight forty-five a.m. And note the time change. That's gonna be a long day because we want to talk about some ARPA stuff. And the next regular meeting will be Wednesday, October thirtieth, at ten thirty a.m. in this room. Both of these are in this room. No workshop or no meeting next week. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Here.
Frenchco?
Yeah.
Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the regular meeting dated October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings.
Lisa, I apologize. If we can hold up for one minute, we're having a little bit of an issue with the Zoom quality on here. So give me, give us one minute, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the regular meeting dated October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Because they skip, people don't announce their names, and it's not done compliantly at all with the revised code. No.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
I don't, because some of it just includes luncheons. I just, I'm gonna say no.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yeah, there's not enough information on some of these, not enough information at all. And there's absolutely no budget controls in Trumbull County. It's just whatever the department heads or elected officials ask for is what they try to do and move money around to make it look okay. So I have to vote no because some of these don't have adequate explanation.
Item number six is to adopt a resolution approving the submitted list labeled as O R C five seven zero five point four one D, September, two thousand and twenty-four, of purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now purchase orders in compliance with O R C five seven zero five point four one D.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seven is to concur with the county engineer to close the following roadway. Hubbard Bedford Road, County Highway Six in Hubbard Township between Pot Hour Wheeler Road, County Highway Five and Shotten Road, County Highway Two for a culvert replacement. Closing date Tuesday, October fifteenth through Friday, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eight is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit requested by the company listed, X P O Logistics, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permits to haul steel coils on Trumbull County roadways requested by the company listed, J Row Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number ten is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permits to move overweight equipment over Trumbull County roadways requested by the companies, company listed, J F Loma, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eleven is to award the lowest responsible bid as submitted by SET, Inc. For the rail, railroad crossing removal in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars, twenty-three cents to be direct pay by a grant in the amount of one hundred thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars received from the Ohio Rail Development Commission with the balance to be paid from the listed Highway Engineers Fund and to enter into a contract with SET, Inc. for said project. The project includes the elimination and restoration of three at-grade railroad crossings located on Benedict Leavittsburg Road, Anderson Bailey Road in Braceville Township, and Deal South Road in Warren Township.
Motion to approve.
Discussion. This was one yesterday. We had asked for further information from the engineer's office as to why they went to the second bid instead of the first. To see some detailed facts, they said there were some issues with the, the low bidder that they believed in. I have not received any of the stuff Mr. Gerber was gonna send over and also we were, we were gonna look at the prosecutor's opinion. I didn't receive that either. So I'd like to table this or wait until we get the reasoning for why they go to the second bid. The first one is just about twenty percent over engineers' costs.
Okay, so if you have the ability, you can, you have the ability to look up the information.
Make.
Don't interrupt.
But make your.
I was just somewhere yesterday and they said they couldn't stand that you two men would just interrupt every time I speak. There's no reason for you to interject in that way. There have been problems with Rudzik in the, in the past. We've, we've received a lot of information, packets of information. We, we, while, while I was commissioner, we were having problems with them. Their performance has there's, there's a lot. Alls you have to do is your due diligence to find that out. I mean, there, there's a reason why they didn't select them. So and I, I have no problem with this choice.
I too have, I, I, I'm confident moving forward with it.
So, Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
She's second.
Pay attention. Pay attention, Lisa. Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
I'm staying on this because I didn't get the info requested.
Item number twelve. Item number twelve is to authorize the planning commission to submit on it an amendment request to the Ohio Department of Development for grant number B F two three I C S one, project year two thousand and twenty-three, C D B G Community Development Program, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign any related required documents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to authorize the Board of Commissioners clerk to advertise for sealed bids for contract services for repair work of water and sewer lines for two thousand and twenty-five on a per call or as needed basis for the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
For Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to remove from table. Item number twenty-five, Commissioner's Meeting Agenda under the date of October second, two thousand and twenty-four. And that was to award the best proposal as submitted by Inmate Calling Solutions, L L C, doing businesses I C Solutions for inmate telephone and kiosk financial transaction device equipment and services for use by the Trumbull County Jail, and to enter into a contract with I C S Solutions for the inmate telephone and kiosk equipment and services.
Motion to remove from table.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to modify and award the best proposal as submitted by Inmate Calling Solutions, L L C, doing businesses I C S Solutions for inmate telephone and kiosk financial transaction device equipment and services for use in the Trumbull County Jail. With I C Solutions, Trumbull County will have the opportunity to receive eighty percent commission of the total gross revenues of all telephone calls made by the inmates. The inmate telephone system is not a purchase, and to enter into a contract with I C Solutions for the inmate telephone and kiosk equipment and services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds, and this is for Kinsman Township for a culvert. And down near the bottom of the page, a one-time grant to the Kinsman Township in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents to replace and repair the culvert, which runs below Morford East Road.
Motion to approve.
Second, the motion.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Kinsman Township as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds required to enable the township to replace and repair the culvert, which runs beneath Morford East Road, as fully described in Exhibit A, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of twenty thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents to the township.
Motion to approve.
Second.
For Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
We have trustee from Kinsman, Mr. Van Croft is here, so we can do a check presentation as we did last week.
And there is something else on the agenda that looks like it was removed by the clerk, even though it was to be read and die for a lack of second. Why is it not here?
Yeah. I know. Vince, I talked to Vince yesterday.
Yeah, I was worried, I was worried that people weren't gonna come. I am going to make a motion from the floor because my agenda item was evidently and obviously removed by the clerk without.
No, it was removed by the two commissioners in a public meeting yesterday that you were not at.
Actually, it was to be left on, and then I, and then to die for a lack of second. You don't have the authority to do that based on.
We do.
Policy that we adopted. So I'm making a motion to begin the disciplinary process for Commissioners Office staff for obvious offenses and violations and request an outside investigation to determine appropriate discipline for the balance of offensive involving Commissioners Office and Human Resources staff. The constituents have requested termination of certain staff due to flagrant misconduct in the workplace, and the county has a duty pursuant to ASME twenty-four ninety-three C B A to implement equal discipline. Requests to formally discipline and investigate staff have been rejected by Fuda, Malloy, Cantalamaesa, and Divin Gen Z Bush. Disciplining, disciplining has occurred to our union's lead negotiator and in the middle of negotiations. And that basically threatened, it was intended to threaten and intimidate during negotiations. Someone else was disciplined for far less that was perceived to be an insult or a threat, but, and it was initiated by the H R Director for an email. And what occurred last week in our.
Is that your motion? State your motion.
Right. I, I, I'm explaining that, explaining it as well, just as if any special net would say that. And in our office, someone flagrantly violated not only policy, but the law. And ignoring that sets the county up for a lot of problems relative to disparate discipline in the county for possibly civil rights issues and C B A issues. We cannot allow people to behave in the fashion that they have and to continue to get, get away with it. Shut your mouth.
The motion dies for lack of a second.
Of course.
Number eighteen.
Item number eighteen is to approve change order number one, deduct with DeSalvo Construction Company, Inc. For the Trumbull County Engineers Office Upgrade Project located at six fifty North River Road, Warren. The upgrade includes new windows, new mechanical systems, and new electrical panels in the amount of one million, eleven thousand dollars. Change order number one deduct is a credit of sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars as provided by Warren Glass for services, tools, equipment, labor, and materials for curtain walls. The new contract total, including change order number one, will be nine hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to amend Commissioners Regular Meeting Agenda dated July third, two thousand and twenty-four. Item numbers twenty-one and twenty-two to award Sage Integration Holdings, L L C, the proposal submitted for the new security access control in the Trumbull County Family Court Building and the Trumbull County Administration Building. Amendment is necessary to change the fund number for both, both proposals as listed and appropriate accordingly.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There is nothing sent to us identifying exactly what the error was.
It was just a fund number correction.
Yeah. Again, it's just on the agenda without any. People consistently make errors and they probably.
Look at the bottom. It says right here, amendment is necessary to change the fund number. It's written in English in front of you.
Yeah, and who, and, and these, these are routinely coming up that there are mistakes with fund numbers. Every couple of weeks or so, there's, there's an error. And I just think that we need a little verification as to who is making these errors and just not ignoring every. It appears as if people are more interested in, you know, following me around and trying to intimidate commissioners as opposed to just doing their jobs correctly. So.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes, but whoever keeps making these mistakes needs to be looked at.
Item number twenty is to award Sage Integrations Holding, L L C, the proposal submitted for additional doors needing security that were not included in the new security access control completed in August, two thousand and twenty-four, in the Trumbull County Family Court Building located at two twenty Main Avenue, Warren, Ohio. Proposal is in the amount of ten thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety cents and is below state purchasing threshold.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
I didn't have enough information about this, so I'm just gonna abstain.
Item number twenty-one is to appoint Sheriff Paul Monroe to serve on the nine-one-one program review board per O R C one two eight point zero six six, an elected official from within the county appointed by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We were, we're supposed to receive information before. First of all, this came to the agenda late and was still put on by the clerk, but she hasn't put anything on that I've asked over the last few weeks. Still waiting for those things. And they're supposed to send verification related to their agenda item, and there's not a copy of that section of the code. It just says that there's, that they're recommending it be the sheriff. It could be possibly another elected official that doesn't violate rights or commit felonies.
We went over this two months ago in full, the whole nine-one-one review board, every position and every requirement at a, at a workshop that you were not at. So this is a follow-up to that from months ago. So I don't know how you said it's late and how you said there was no discussion. If you'd have been there, you could have went over the whole revised code with all of us.
Send some, when they send something in, she should be, and I made my statement. It's not to argue with someone petty and small-minded. It's.
I'm just saying your statement is ignorant and uneducated because you were not at the meeting, but that you could have been at.
No.
They actually, taxpayers paid you to be there and you weren't there.
Since, when something is sent, it's supposed to have that information with it to be even placed on the agenda, but they're just whatever.
You don't like the sheriff and blah, blah, blah. Next item.
Yeah, I, what do you mean? We don't, we don't like the sheriff and, I'm sorry. Let's, let's be a little more clear. This man destroyed evidence. Him and Mauro Cantalamaesa are actually felons because they destroyed, they tampered with evidence. Oh, you think, yeah, when you tamper with evidence, I'm sorry, there's someone, someone over.
Call the role and stick to the agenda.
There's someone in Austintown who actually received one year in prison for doing precisely what you boys did. And it just, the prosecutor's office, the prosecutor's office doesn't do anything about it.
Can we look at the, we stayed on the.
For item twenty-one, Mr. Cantalamaesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No.
Okay, this time I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one twenty-one dot twenty-two G one to consider the discipline of one, Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, public employee.
Second.
That's discussion. No, we have discussion. You guys have read everything on this, and there is absolutely no evidence to proceed with anything. There is not anything documented. There's not anything written. There's an alleged phone call and a possible HIPAA violation, and you're trying, they're trying to take action against an employee without any verification. He even wrote a letter of, of, objecting. It's, it's very evident that they do not have any written information and everything's based on a phone call. Yet we allow employees who you are witnessing just running around the office like wild animals screaming and acting out. And, and that is okay. And yet they're gonna try to discipline someone over absolute hearsay from an, from a, from management without any type of verification at all, at all. I mean, just read this. It's a, it's a, it's a public record. This whole investigation and there's, there's literally nothing.
That's why we're going to executive session to discuss it, to learn. Apparently you already did the whole investigation on your own.
I read what I, this is the same, these are the same people, by the way, who allowed TikTok, Alex Divin Gen Z Bush, the pretend H R Director, to make twenty, to make all those TikTok videos and then at her desk.
It's time for executive session.
And to say that, and to say that she didn't do anything wrong. Do we trust them? I don't.
Mr. Malloy?
Uh, yes.
Ms. French?
Absolutely not. It's ridiculous.
Okay, we'll be back in minutes.
Same out every week.
Discipline of one, TCD JFS Public Employee.
I'll second that.
Sir Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Sir Malloy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Item twenty-four is to approve and ratify the personnel action for termination of an employee of the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services. The employee violated the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services Personnel Policy and Collective Bargaining Agreement. The employee violated... The employee will be terminated effective October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
And discussion, please, discussion. So there is an employee who, um, there are forty-five employees working from home right now. And there's allegations about the validity of the doctor's note for one of them. Um, that it's not valid, you know, they're saying that it's not real, but there's nothing, there's no signed statements or anything from the doctor's office. Um, or the doctor, this is something.
You're incorrect, you walked out and we saw the documented paperwork from the doctor's office, multiple, uh, from doctors offices, it wasn't a one-time offense. It was multiple over two-year period with doctor's statements to us, signed by the doctor stating that they did not sign that excuse. Falsified documents.
There's an email.
You're wrong, you, you walked out and didn't see it, you chose not to see it. You can change the narrative all you want, you can't change the facts.
They, they emailed us those things and...
Apparently you didn't know that because you said you didn't have any information on it when you were in there.
That's not correct, I have, I read everything that I needed to read to see that phone calls don't, I don't believe that phone calls should, uh, substantiate that. And I don't, and quite frankly, I mean, this is, these are the same people who investigated Alex Divengenza Bush for making twenty-seven TikTok videos. She lied in her investigation and they did nothing to her. They, they play favorites.
We move on.
They play favorites to people who they protect and then they're extra extremely punitive to people who aren't connected.
I al- I also question this instance here and I don't like terminating anybody ever, but I also question is I wish this employee the best. Moving forward and, but there is a possibility, there may be criminal things here, you say falsified documents.
Why don't, why don't you, um, why don't you wait then? Why don't you wait and, uh, before you move to termination and...
Wait for, do you want to bring the doctor in here to testify, is that what you want?
There's just nothing that, there's, there's nothing that you can see that is, there's nothing that was provided to us. Um, I asked for copies or, and to see what was in front, if there was anything additional past what we received in our emails and there wasn't anything additional past what we received in our emails. So...
What additional would you like?
Was there anything additional? No, nothing. I asked for it, she said, no, everything we have here is what we sent you in the email and there was, there isn't, there is an email from someone allegedly, there's no...
Multiple emails.
There's nothing written, signed by, there's nothing.
And, okay.
Sir Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Sir Malloy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Item twenty-four is to approve and ratify the personnel action for termination of an employee of the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services. The employee violated the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services Personnel Policy and Collective Bargaining Agreement. The employee violated... The employee will be terminated effective October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
And discussion, please, discussion. So there is an employee who, um, there are forty-five employees working from home right now. And there's allegations about the validity of the doctor's note for one of them. Um, that it's not valid, you know, they're saying that it's not real, but there's nothing, there's no signed statements or anything from the doctor's office. Um, or the doctor, this is something.
You're incorrect, you walked out and we saw the documented paperwork from the doctor's office, multiple, uh, from doctors offices, it wasn't a one-time offense. It was multiple over two-year period with doctor's statements to us, signed by the doctor stating that they did not sign that excuse. Falsified documents.
There's an email.
You're wrong, you, you walked out and didn't see it, you chose not to see it. You can change the narrative all you want, you can't change the facts.
They, they emailed us those things and...
Apparently you didn't know that because you said you didn't have any information on it when you were in there.
That's not correct, I have, I read everything that I needed to read to see that phone calls don't, I don't believe that phone calls should, uh, substantiate that. And I don't, and quite frankly, I mean, this is, these are the same people who investigated Alex Divengenza Bush for making twenty-seven TikTok videos. She lied in her investigation and they did nothing to her. They, they play favorites.
We move on.
They play favorites to people who they protect and then they're extra extremely punitive to people who aren't connected.
I al- I also question this instance here and I don't like terminating anybody ever, but I also question is I wish this employee the best. Moving forward and, but there is a possibility, there may be criminal things here, you say falsified documents.
Why don't, why don't you, um, why don't you wait then? Why don't you wait and, uh, before you move to termination and...
Wait for, do you want to bring the doctor in here to testify, is that what you want?
There's just nothing that, there's, there's nothing that you can see that is, there's nothing that was provided to us. Um, I asked for copies or, and to see what was in front, if there was anything additional past what we received in our emails and there wasn't anything additional past what we received in our emails. So...
What additional would you like?
Was there anything additional? No, nothing. I asked for it, she said, no, everything we have here is what we sent you in the email and there was, there isn't, there is an email from someone allegedly, there's no...
Multiple emails.
There's nothing written, signed by, there's nothing.
And, okay.
Sir Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Sir Malloy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Item twenty-four is to approve and ratify the personnel action for termination of an employee of the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services. The employee violated the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services Personnel Policy and Collective Bargaining Agreement. The employee violated... The employee will be terminated effective October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
And discussion, please, discussion. So there is an employee who, um, there are forty-five employees working from home right now. And there's allegations about the validity of the doctor's note for one of them. Um, that it's not valid, you know, they're saying that it's not real, but there's nothing, there's no signed statements or anything from the doctor's office. Um, or the doctor, this is something.
You're incorrect, you walked out and we saw the documented paperwork from the doctor's office, multiple, uh, from doctors offices, it wasn't a one-time offense. It was multiple over two-year period with doctor's statements to us, signed by the doctor stating that they did not sign that excuse. Falsified documents.
There's an email.
You're wrong, you, you walked out and didn't see it, you chose not to see it. You can change the narrative all you want, you can't change the facts.
They, they emailed us those things and...
Apparently you didn't know that because you said you didn't have any information on it when you were in there.
That's not correct, I have, I read everything that I needed to read to see that phone calls don't, I don't believe that phone calls should, uh, substantiate that. And I don't, and quite frankly, I mean, this is, these are the same people who investigated Alex Divengenza Bush for making twenty-seven TikTok videos. She lied in her investigation and they did nothing to her. They, they play favorites.
We move on.
They play favorites to people who they protect and then they're extra extremely punitive to people who aren't connected.
I al- I also question this instance here and I don't like terminating anybody ever, but I also question is I wish this employee the best. Moving forward and, but there is a possibility, there may be criminal things here, you say falsified documents.
Why don't, why don't you, um, why don't you wait then? Why don't you wait and, uh, before you move to termination and...
Wait for, do you want to bring the doctor in here to testify, is that what you want?
There's just nothing that, there's, there's nothing that you can see that is, there's nothing that was provided to us. Um, I asked for copies or, and to see what was in front, if there was anything additional past what we received in our emails and there wasn't anything additional past what we received in our emails. So...
What additional would you like?
Was there anything additional? No, nothing. I asked for it, she said, no, everything we have here is what we sent you in the email and there was, there isn't, there is an email from someone allegedly, there's no...
Multiple emails.
There's nothing written, signed by, there's nothing.
And, okay.
Sir Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Sir Malloy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Item twenty-four is to approve and ratify the personnel action for termination of an employee of the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services. The employee violated the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services Personnel Policy and Collective Bargaining Agreement. The employee violated... The employee will be terminated effective October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
And discussion, please, discussion. So there is an employee who, um, there are forty-five employees working from home right now. And there's allegations about the validity of the doctor's note for one of them. Um, that it's not valid, you know, they're saying that it's not real, but there's nothing, there's no signed statements or anything from the doctor's office. Um, or the doctor, this is something.
You're incorrect, you walked out and we saw the documented paperwork from the doctor's office, multiple, uh, from doctors offices, it wasn't a one-time offense. It was multiple over two-year period with doctor's statements to us, signed by the doctor stating that they did not sign that excuse. Falsified documents.
There's an email.
You're wrong, you, you walked out and didn't see it, you chose not to see it. You can change the narrative all you want, you can't change the facts.
They, they emailed us those things and...
Apparently you didn't know that because you said you didn't have any information on it when you were in there.
That's not correct, I have, I read everything that I needed to read to see that phone calls don't, I don't believe that phone calls should, uh, substantiate that. And I don't, and quite frankly, I mean, this is, these are the same people who investigated Alex Divengenza Bush for making twenty-seven TikTok videos. She lied in her investigation and they did nothing to her. They, they play favorites.
We move on.
They play favorites to people who they protect and then they're extra extremely punitive to people who aren't connected.
I al- I also question this instance here and I don't like terminating anybody ever, but I also question is I wish this employee the best. Moving forward and, but there is a possibility, there may be criminal things here, you say falsified documents.
Why don't, why don't you, um, why don't you wait then? Why don't you wait and, uh, before you move to termination and...
Wait for, do you want to bring the doctor in here to testify, is that what you want?
There's just nothing that, there's, there's nothing that you can see that is, there's nothing that was provided to us. Um, I asked for copies or, and to see what was in front, if there was anything additional past what we received in our emails and there wasn't anything additional past what we received in our emails. So...
What additional would you like?
Was there anything additional? No, nothing. I asked for it, she said, no, everything we have here is what we sent you in the email and there was, there isn't, there is an email from someone allegedly, there's no...
Multiple emails.
There's nothing written, signed by, there's nothing.
And, okay.
Sir Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Sir Malloy?
Yes.
It's Tremble County.
Because it's extremely disparate and there is an actual ability to allow someone to continue to work from home when they already have forty-five people working from home. I think it's just...
The employee was working from home and, and then stopped working from home.
Talking and I'm, I'm asserting my reason for, uh, for my vote, um, and that's, no.
Okay, that concludes our regular business for today. I, I have...
You do have a question.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm continuing here. I have one motion that I need to make from the bench. This is something that came in, uh, via email, uh, which of course we cannot respond to, um, Gary, um, so I'm going to do it from the floor. It was nothing, we didn't want to be accused of round-robining or anything, so I'm going to, I'm going to read it myself here today instead of replying to your email yesterday. And this is, uh, motion to approve the detailed water drawings for the Blueprint Phase Two Water Improvements Project. Braceville, Southington and Farmington Townships, Tremble County Combined Water District knows County Project Number Two, N- W nineteen. This action per recommendation of Tremble County Sanitary Engineer and subject to the approval of Ohio EPA.
That's the motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, it's my motion, I'll second it.
Sir Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Sir Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now at this time, do we have anything for the good of Tremble County?
Talking, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, I was listening, but, uh, you both said that as it relates to the twenty, to the eighty-five thousand and additional funds that you were going to, um, ask the prosecutor, you asked them right there, like if it was okay, because you talked about doing a public-private partnership. I remember hearing it very explicitly what, what the, the plan was. Um, but there was no actual prosecutor's request, it was just talk because we, he has to have an actual written request for an opinion. And when I asked the prosecutor's office, Bill Danzo, for a copy of his, his opinion about that, he said he didn't, he didn't prepare one because it was just verbal in the meeting.
Correct, first of all, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be for him, it would be for Tony Rogers. These are our...
That has to do with the eligibility of the project, meaning infrastructure, but, um, from his perspective, it would be whether or not it was statute, statutorily correct for us to participate in a, in a public-private partnership.
Again, he won't give that, he won't give that opinion, that would be Tony Rogers.
No, that, that doesn't really, her...
I respectfully disagree.
She was, she was hired for the purpose of making sure that the requests comply with the eligibility for the treasury guidance. But our legal counsel makes sure that what we're doing is lawful as it relates to allowability, um, of other things, yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not just whether or not it's allowable with, uh, the ARPA money. It's, uh, making sure that we're allowed to help a private, do a pu- public-private partnership where if, if you, if he weren't, if we weren't doing it this way, he would have to do a private extension. And so to do it...
No, we're doing, there are houses here, we're, we're...
There are other homes that are benefiting.
They're asking eighty-five thousand to extend to the houses that are there. Not to extend to a private, public partnership.
Remember the, the meeting where you talked about this?
But you were at the hearing we were at when it was discussed too. This is, this is just going back to the original scope of the original request that we had, that's all it was, which is already just extending down another street.
With, it's a petition project and there are other homeowners there.
So it's a, it's a petition project, there's other homeowners.
Correct, correct.
That's the motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, it's my motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Cantala Mesa or Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
French, Kyle?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, now at this time, do we have anything for the good of Tremble County?
Talking, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, I was listening, but, uh, you both said that as it relates to the twenty, to the eighty-five thousand and additional funds that you were going to, um, ask the prosecutor, you asked them right there, like if it was okay, because you talked about doing a public-private partnership. I remember hearing it very explicitly what, what the, the plan was, um, but there was no actual prosecutor's request. It was just talk because we, he has to have an actual written request for an opinion. And when I asked the prosecutor's office, Bill Danzo, for a copy of his, his opinion about that, he said he didn't, he didn't prepare one because it was just verbal in the meeting.
Correct. First of all, it wouldn't be-
Tony Rogers.
It wouldn't be for him. It would be for Tony Rogers. These are our potential.
That has to do with the eligibility of the project, meaning infrastructure, but, um, from his perspective, it would be whether or not it was statute, statutorily correct for us to participate in a, in a public-private partnership.
I don't remember asking anybody.
He won't give that, he won't give that opinion. That would be Tony Rogers.
No, that, that doesn't really, her-
I respectfully disagree.
She was, she was hired for the purpose of making sure that the requests comply with the eligibility for the treasury guidance, but our legal counsel makes sure that what we're doing is lawful as it relates to allowability, um, of other things. Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not just whether or not it's allowable with the, the ARPA money, it's, uh, making sure that we're allowed to help a private, do a pu- public-private partnership where if, if you, if he weren't, i- if we weren't doing it this way, he would have to do a private extension. And so to do it this-
No, we're doing, there are houses here. We are, we're-
There are other homes that are benefiting.
Eighty-five thousand to extend to the houses that are there.
There is no public side of partnership.
Partnership.
Remember the, the meeting where you talked about this?
Well, you were at the hearing we were at when it was discussed too. This is, this is just going back to the original scope of the original request that we had. It's all it was, which is already just extending down another street.
With, it's a petition project and there are other homeowners there.
So it's a, it's a petition project. There's other homeowners.
Correct.
But when it was advertised-
Some of which came to our meeting.
But when it was advertised, it didn't include that error.
Oh my gosh.
I'm, I'm saying if you're going to do it, make sure it's done right.
Gary Newbrough, Sanitary Engineer, uh, Commissioners, we received petitions for, uh, wat- public water service on, uh, Stillwagon Road, and then later some people on Anderson Morris Road als- also wanted to join that petition, and so we modified the petition to include those properties also. Uh, when it came time for the public hearing, after we had, uh, the funding secured because of the escalation in cost for projects, we had to scale the project back and not include the people on Anderson Morris Road. So we went to the public hearing with a tentative assessments for those people on Stillwagon Road. And as a result of that public hearing, uh, I was advised to let's explore if we can get to also include the people on Anderson Morris Road and to be able to include them at the same tentative assessments as the people on Stillwagon. It would require an, uh, injection of about eighty-five thousand dollars of additional grant.
And those people will have to vote themselves with another hearing.
We will have to have another public hearing.
We're just combining the money.
And the, and the reason why we arrived at that is originally in the original scope, we thought it was going to be around a hundred and fifty thousand, when in reality it's about eighty-five thousand.
Yes.
And, and then we said, well, this can make this much more affordable.
Yes. Yes.
Again, all this was-
And, and anything with a private-public relationship partnership or I, I don't, I have no idea what you were referring to with that.
It was discussed in their workshop and you were there.
A public-private partnership. No, I, I, I don't recall anything like that.
What you said. So this, this is actually going to be a separate, a separate, um, public hearing, a separate, you're not just adding this on.
We are going to add this, uh, we will have a public hearing for those people on Anderson Morris Road, and it will, if we get, if they are, if they want to be in the project, then it will be added to the project.
But it will have its own set, what I'm saying is it going to have its own set of yes, no votes, or is it going, are you proposing to consolidate?
Fifty percent of the front footage along Anderson Morris Road-
Of the new group?
Says, yes, says, it says that they want to be included in the project and they will be added to the project.
But if they say no, it's not going to taint the first project because they're separate.
Right.
You're not combining them. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure because that's the statutorily correct process. I did, and from what I heard or understood, it sounded like you were trying to just put it all together.
No, you, you heard incorrectly.
No, that's what they said. They were combining it, but now he just explained that he was following the-
Minding the money for ARPA is all we talked about combining.
Sure that he does things the right way. That's our job.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Tremble County? Okay, here none. Uh, again, our next public workshop will be Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, eight forty-five, uh, will be noticed correctly, uh, to let the public know it's earlier. And on the agenda for that day, um, is the remaining ARPA funds, and that's why we wanted to extend the timeframe to give more time to get that done in one day so we can make our deadlines. We need to meet it by the end of the year, uh, with the ARPA funds. We're going to do the maybe list and any other ones that came in after the portal was closed.
Okay. Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
For Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, no.
Need a sign?
All right, no.
Do I need to sign? No, I don't.